Elegir ese icono de la tierra y por favor seleccione su idioma preferido. Y pero si hoy usted está haciendo a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor busca la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más. O posiblemente el botón de tres puntos que él permitirá elegir su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le voy a aconsejar que elija su idioma preferido. Para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Si usted sigue bilingüe, sienta-se y ve a escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Item number three, opening remarks by mayor and council. Does anyone have any opening remarks? Nope, seeing none. Presentations and proclamations. We have 4.1 proclamation recognizing community is stronger than cancer day. Lexi, are you going to excellent meet me up here at the podium?
All right, proclamation recognizing June 28th, 2024 as community is stronger than cancer day. Whereas there are more than 18 million people with a history of cancer living in the United States. And more than 5,480 individuals in the United States may be diagnosed with an invasive cancer in a single day in 2024. And whereas community is stronger than cancer day celebrates the community that comes together to support cancer patients, survivors, caregivers, and their loved ones. And whereas in 2023, 2,000 or 264,057 people visited cancer support community adult programs. And 25,950 individuals participated in cancer support community, child, teen, and family programs. Calling upon their communities for support, education, healthy lifestyle, and social events. And whereas in southwest Colorado, CSC is the organization that specializes in patient navigation services. And in 2024 to date has served 2,995 people through navigation and programs. And whereas community is stronger than cancer day is a celebration of a day of inspiration, companionship, connection, and hope. And now therefore I Jessica Buell, mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim June 28th, 2024 as community is stronger than cancer day.
Absolutely. Yeah, and then you can say your few words.
Sure. I would just like to say thank you for doing this. We are part of a program that is 200 organizations wide now. And we are the only CSC in Colorado. And on top of that, the only one in a rural community in Colorado, which is awesome. So we would just like to say thank you for doing this for us.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, item five, city manager updates.
No updates this evening.
Excellent. Item six, committee, board, and liaison reports. Does any counselor have a report? Go for it. Counselor Woodruff.
We had our creative economy commission on June 25th. We had round two of our LTAC funding that passed, LTAC being lodgers, lodgers tax arts and culture funding. We awarded 15 projects for a total of $256,000. And then in total, 27 projects applied for some of those grants for a total of $723,000. So it is a pretty in-depth vetting process for the committee, but everybody feels really strongly about the awardees. And that being said, in two and a half years since the inception of the lodgers tax altering arts and culture funding, 94 projects had been awarded. Grant distributions totaling $1.275 million. So it's pretty remarkable to see that our per capita spending before this funding mechanism became available was three bucks and now it's 29 bucks. So it's it's pretty incredible to kind of see how much we're really moving the needle for the creative arts in the community and how that helps propel the economy at large.
I just was gonna add too, it's just so neat to see it all through town. All the new murals going up. It's so great.
It's it's great. It's a great way to leverage some of those lodgers tax dollars for for things that we can all appreciate.
It's really great.
We spoke about the transition from the Creative Economy Commission to the Durango Creative District and what the 2025 work plan should look like. And part of that conversation was talking about revitalizing revitalizing some of those character districts. So that kind of works in conjunction with our community development department. So I think the DCD is going to take over a lot of those conversations and how we kind of revitalize some of those character districts and really make sure that they have a seat at the table regarding the creative arts. And how we are visioning our community from a community development standpoint. So that was the CDC meeting and then we are also as so the chamber, we are having an executive director committee meetup. So we are hiring up the new executive director. We had our interviews last week via Zoom. So we had some really great candidates, really solid. And then we're looking forward to that next round of in-person interviews coming up. So this is a really integral part of our community, having the chamber director. So it's great to have a seat at the table, helping decide with other community leaders about who that person should be. So it's it's been really great. Thanks.
I had office hours, council office hours that well attended and we talked about childcare, minimum wage, and downtown next steps.
Okay, on June 19th, I had the library meeting. And it was well attended by the board meeting. We just elected new officers for the next year. And we just had updates on what we're going to accomplish this coming year. And that's about it for that. But also on June 20th, I attended the historical background of June, Juneteenth here in City Hall with some of the staff. And we had a virtual presentation by a very astute panel. And so I've got more knowledge about the reason why Juneteenth is so important. And I was really glad that the city of Durango is doing these diversity sessions for interested staff members and city council. So thank you for that.
Okay, my big highlight was I went to the 102nd 2024 Colorado Municipal League Conference. So I was in Loveland with Mark Morgan was there, Jose Madrigal was there. Oh, and Jim, our assistant city attorney was there as well. It was it was in Loveland, Colorado. It was great to kind of see another municipality and some of the things that they're doing too with their creative economy. They have a whole sculpture garden. It was actually a really beautiful little little city up there. But then some of the highlights on the breakouts that I went to, I did one about elected officials' role in economic development, which is really interesting and like what role we should play in helping economic development in our area. After the talk, the speaker was the president of the Economic Development of Colorado. And she had amazing things to say about our very own Scott Shine, who I guess is on the board or yes, thank you. And so that was always great to hear. And I was like, oh, why did I even attend? Scott knows all this, so I should just not even go. I'm just kidding. And then I did another one, which was really great on historic preservation. The History Colorado and I'm trying to think of the other entity that was there speaking. They talked about grants and different things for main streets and downtown and like grid areas for preserving your downtown and different grants that you can take advantage of through the design process, through the building, construction process, and some different examples of what's been going on and how much money they kind of have sitting there left over and not being used. And so I was like, oh, okay, that's a good little tidbit as well. And then I did a bunch of housing breakouts as well. So it was really informative and great. Next year it's in Breckenridge. And so that'll be a different change of place. Normally it's up in Denver area. And so Breckenridge will be a nice seven, like a little town. And then just a side note, I know you guys got the email from Kyle, but the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, their August meeting is here in Durango. And so as many counselors that can attend that for good representation to kind of show them that, you know, we're awesome and love our community, that would be great. So I'll be there and it'd be great for anyone else who could attend. All right, that's it. Okay, moving on, public comment on agenda items only, number seven.
Hey, do we have anyone that has signed up for public comment?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The first individual is in person and that is Pam Moore. For item 9.1.
Thank you. My name is Pam Moore. I'm a resident of the city of Durango. I'm the executive director of the Homes Fund and I'm here to talk about the the APCO unit. And I have to ask for a time variance. I've tried to get down to three minutes. I need five and a half minutes.
I'm gonna look at council. Is it okay with everyone for five and a half minutes? But and then it would have to be everyone at public comment gets five and a half minutes. Okay, do I have a motion for to change the time limit on public comment to five and a half minutes today?
Yes, I make a motion to change the public comment to five and a half minutes.
Seconds.
All right, any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a way to reset the clock or to different ish? Okay. I'm just gonna, you know, I'll just do this one on my phone and then we can take, we can go from there. No big deal. A moment. And all right, you ready?
Okay, thank you. I'm reading from prepared, a prepared statement. Again, my name is Pam Moore. I'm the executive director of the Homes Fund. I'm speaking before you this evening to discuss the qualified buyer selection for the APCO unit. I have read and heard repeated implication that this process was fishy. This is very upsetting. I'm here to protect the reputation and defend the unbiased actions and decisions of the Homes Fund. I can assure city council that the process was to underwrite and issue the qualified buyer letter was equitable, consistent, and impartial. The Homes Fund followed exactly the process we were given by the city. This issue has escalated quickly and has had extreme consequences for the parties involved. I am reading from notes that have been approved and reviewed by our board of directors, two of whom are here this evening. The first thing I need to address is mortgage math. I keep hearing that it shouldn't be so difficult to find an eligible buyer for the APCO units. The answer to that question is quite complex, but the simple explanation is that $400,000 homes are not affordable to many households under 125% AMI with interest rates that are seven to seven and a quarter. 125% AMI is the income cap for the APCO deed restriction. This house is not affordable to any households under 80% AMI unless they have significant personal resources. This house is affordable to households between 80, excuse me, between 90 and 100% AMI if the Homes Fund puts $108,000 of down payment assistance underneath them and they're comfortable with a $2,300 a month payment. For households over 100% AMI, the other stacks of down payment assistance fall away. The only assistance available is the city of Durango $50,000 loan and the house payment increases to $2,700 a month. Only a small percentage of home buyers who have incomes under 125% AMI can reasonably afford or want to afford a house payment between $2,300 and $2,700 a month. I also might add that anyone who wants to buy a house might not qualify to buy a house. Eligibility to buy and interest in buying are two very different things. Homes Fund spends a lot of time working through basic personal finance scenarios that won't work for homeownership. Because families have poor credit, they have a big car loan, they've taken on credit card debt, or they have student loan balances. Or they might simply not have enough cash. Conditions need to be right for homeownership. Additionally, not all households want a deed restriction. Deed restrictions have limitations and rules and not everyone wants to sign on for those. Back to the process of selecting buyers for the deed restricted units. On the Homes Fund website, we have a page that invites individuals to sign up to get information about affordable housing opportunities. When the APCO unit was going to be available for sale, we were told by the city to market the unit for two weeks to two lists we were managing. One being the APCO 2022 lottery list and the second being the interest list for people who have signed up on our website. All in all, an initial email blast went to 49 households on April 25th. These individuals were given a period of two weeks to complete an application to the Homes Fund and provide a prequalification letter from a lender. Several people completed applications to the Homes Fund for review. But to my point above, just because a household thinks they're mortgage ready doesn't mean they are mortgage ready. During those two weeks, Homes Fund sent correspondence about the APCO unit to anyone who would qualify, who is currently in our active counseling pipeline, or anyone we came across during those two weeks that came in for service. If someone contacted our office asking about the APCO unit, we advised them to register on our interest list. And then they received the email describing all the details of the deed restriction, the income caps, the appreciation caps, etc. This was another 14 households. In addition, we had mentioned the opportunity in our home buyer education class on May 11th, which was another 30 people. In the end, we believe 93 people received information about this unit. After working through this process, the mortgage math, the housing counseling, the deed restriction review, only one applicant moved forward. Not five, as reported by the Herald, only one. That buyer finished all the steps to receive the qualified buyer letter. The qualified buyer met not only the income guidelines, not too much, but not too little. Had good credit, acceptable credit, acceptable debt to income ratios, and even had a down payment of their own. Even better, they were on a month-to-month lease and understood and had lived in deed restriction, deed restricted housing previously. With all the required approved conditions met, we issued the qualified buyer letter. Homes Fund was not aware of the relationship that seems to be an issue in this matter. And we did not deviate from our process. In the application, we processed it like any other. I'm giving you this level of detail to set the record straight that Homes I'm giving you this level of detail to set the record straight that Homes Fund gave no favoritism to any applicant. Homes Fund followed objectively the process that was agreed to by the city. It was a process that was equal to all that expressed interest. Homes Fund did the underwriting on this transaction in a fully unbiased, fair, and equitable manner. Only one qualified buyer came through all of these efforts. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor. The next individual is Zane Wells, speaking on item nine point one.
Good evening, City Council. Thanks for having me. I'm Zane Wells. I am a city resident and I'm here to speak on the APCO unit issue as well. I am mostly here to support what Homes Fund has disclosed to you all. I am unsure what facts has been shared with you five and I highly, highly encourage you to do your own due diligence here. I was just a little history. I was engaged by the city to represent the four prior buyers for the deed restricted units. I worked alongside your former Housing Innovation Manager Eva and Homes Fund. It was a very professional and wonderful experience for all involved. They did a great job. And I believe we are on that same path with unit five being sold to the client that I was representing, but I will not name here. Where I'm going at is tonight, to my understanding, the staff's recommending to not pass the ordinance. I don't know what you can do or cannot do. My encouragement is to not take that recommendation. I don't know if you can approve it. You probably need to do some more due diligence, but if you can postpone it and do your due diligence, I would, I would think that would do a lot of justice for all that were involved. There's already been enough sacrifices in everything that has transpired. You've lost a very good employee in this city and it hits close to my heart being that this is going to a very well-qualified buyer. I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is no one else who had signed up to speak under agenda items?
All right. Thank you very much. We are now at item eight, the consent agenda. Can we have a reading of the consent agenda?
Thank you. Item eight point one, approval of meeting minutes. There's item eight point one point one, approval of minutes from the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four City Council Special Meeting. Item eight point one point two is approval of minutes from the June seventeenth City Council Regular Meeting. Eight point one point three is approval of the minutes from the June twenty-fifth City Council Special Meeting. There are no items under final readings of ordinances. There's no items under adoption of resolutions by consent. No items under approval of other administrative items. No items under request for public hearing. Under item eight point six, introduction of ordinances, there's item eight point six point one, which is an introduction of ordinance for an easement for Black Hills Energy to service the Durango-Laplata County Airport scheduled for July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, submitted by the Community Development Department.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Yaasi?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Buell?
Yes. Section nine, items pulled from the consent agenda, nine point one, final reading of ordinance O dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one zero for the sale of city-owned property located at one six six East Thirty-third Street for conveyance of real property. We have.
Sure, I think we'll have Scott Shine presenting, but I think before I'll just make a couple of comments just to kind of address some of the citizen comments that we received before.
Excellent.
First off, there is maybe a miscommunication on that. Never have, has it been the intention of city staff to say Homes Fund did anything inappropriately. I don't believe, I've said that to any of that email communication. I do believe they followed a process that was outlined again by staff. When you look at it in a whole, you know, I think that there's just a lot of parts where when you're dealing with public dollars, public funding, everything should have been fully disclosed to the council to make a decision because that decision is based on what you think is best for the community and best in the finances of the city. There was information that was withheld. I think when you look at it, I'm not saying it was intentional. I'm just saying you didn't have all of the information. When you look at the paper, I'm not going to, which I've introduced with y'all through the email. I'm not going to go by bit by bit, but I think had you known the full picture, there would have been more questions that would have been asked than how it was before. In fact, I do believe that there was a question that was asked by yourself, Counselor Youssef, in regards to who was the person who purchased it and it was a very vague local government employee answer. And so what I am saying is based on the information that we received, after we had come to our attention and found out more, we saw it as a part of a process that could have been better. We saw it as a process that maybe should have asked questions. Maybe there's different ways to go. Had we known there was only one buyer and, or at least from the city attorney's office, city manager's office, and it was only a two-week process, maybe that was a time to come back to council to say like, if it isn't affordable at the level of AMI, did the city want to put more money into it to make it more affordable? I think there was opportunities to have more discussion and decision based upon it. And with that is the reason that we are going through with this recommendation and with Scott doing the presentation. So I will pass it on to Scott and obviously if there's any questions, Scott and myself can answer.
Now, just from the legal department, the comments from Homes Fund are a bit surprising because there was no indication in any legal review that Homes Fund had done anything wrong either. So not quite sure where that came from. Happy to talk to him afterwards, but there was never any implication by legal, legal side either that Homes Fund did anything inappropriate.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you on this item. It is unusual for staff to recommend not moving forward during second reading of an ordinance. So my intent is that these comments will help you and the public understand how we arrived at this point. As you know, staff was eager to pursue this opportunity to acquire deed restrict and then resell a newly constructed townhome in a walkable multimodal great location adjacent to the North Main Corridor. The Anima City Park Overlook Public-P private Partnership has won multiple awards, as you've known, as you know, as an innovative workforce housing solution. And this last step was a way to maximize the community benefit from this project. The Housing Innovation Division acted quickly to facilitate the city's acquisition of the workforce housing unit in line with guidance given by council and found in the strategic plan. Following acquisition, the next steps were to work with one of our key community partners, Homes Fund, and explore options for the resale of the property. Considering all the information that we now have, the design of this initial process was flawed. And deviate a little bit to respond, this is not because it was not administered well, but it was in the design of it from, from the breadth of awareness of the opportunity and the ability to randomize the selection of a qualified buyer. It wasn't that that was done improperly or not administered well. It was in the design that was led by city staff to give to Homes Fund about how to go about this process. Because of this, staff has placed the second reading of this ordinance on this agenda with a recommendation from the city manager's office and the city attorney's office that the city council not act on the ordinance and allow staff to develop a more open and equitable process for finding a qualified home buyer for this property. It's important to note that staff has completed an in-depth inquiry into this situation and has been in contact with the Human Resources Department, City Manager's Office, and City Attorney's Office. This inquiry has not found any further evidence of actions by individuals still employed with the city which would require disciplinary action. Additionally, while this resale will not be advancing as defined in this current ordinance, staff still feels that the acquisition and resale of the unit is an appropriate and beneficial housing strategy for the city to take and looks forward to designing an open, equitable resale process and advertising the opportunity more broadly to the community. With that background, the staff recommendation is for council to not make a motion and allow the agenda item to expire. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. Do I have a motion? Okay, then we'll move on. That motion expires and then we move on to the next agenda item. Item ten, public hearings, there are no items. Item eleven, resolutions, eleven point one, a resolution to approve the Hilton Home to Suites Preliminary Development Plan at thirty-two Miners Court. Ms. Scott, you're back up.
All right. And you can see on this cover slide, I'm, I am pinch hitting tonight. Mark Williams is sick. He is online if there are specific project questions that come up. But this did go to the Community Development Commission where I was present and I've been involved in the project, so I'll cover it based on his slides. But like I said, we have him as a resource and the applicant's representative is also here if you have questions. So this is a proposal for a new hotel out along Wilson Gold's Drive, approved via resolution for the preliminary development plan. It does align with the strategic plan goal of innovative housing and economic development. And just to start, as we look at the South Fork area, a bit of history, this area was all annexed together with the intent of it being more of a regional commercial area. The Wilson Gold's Drive construction was a collaborative infrastructure project between the city, the county, CDOT, and GF Properties to build this connection and then ultimately enable the realignment of the highway and the bridges to the future being fully functional and open for the community as a gateway into the community. So it's always been envisioned as this sort of regional, regional commercial area. We've had some development so far, the Subaru dealership. We've been in talks with a lot of people. Mesa Verde Senior Living is also under development. We have Maverick now. You saw Starbucks last month. So things are definitely, there's a lot of action and a lot of interest in this area for commercial development. This is the specific site in question tonight. It's, it's directly east of the proposed Starbucks development that you saw last month. The proposal is for a hundred and seven-room hotel, which includes some typical amenities, outdoor patio and indoor pool and good pedestrian connectivity to get over to adjacent uses. It's a two-point-two acre lot and this is one of the character districts that not, one you would, that would come to mind initially, like North Main or College and Eighth, but we did take that character district approach and sort of doing a master plan for this area, trying to find cohesive standards to tie development in the area together. There is obviously onsite parking that meets the requirements. They do plan to provide an airport shuttle, which is an option for hotels and, and they can get a reduction in their onsite parking when they provide that shuttle. This area has always been, the desire has been to be low-impact development. So the lighting is always on our minds as far as how commercial development happens, how the hospital was developed initially. Lighting was a big concern, so we've, we've put some controls on the amount of lighting and the type of lighting that the hotel will have. And then like I mentioned, pedestrian connections to adjacent uses and out to Wilson Gold's Drive, which is a transit route. This is a snapshot of the site plan. You can see the, the building along the north side of the property, abutting Wilson Gold's Drive, parking wrapping around the building and accessed off of Miners Court to the east. The internal landscaping serves as detention for stormwater and sort of a lot of the typical site development features. I can come back to this if there's any questions on the site layout. Here are some elevations and I, I do want to commend Mark and our Community Development Commission put a lot of time into taking what the applicant initially brought in and working with them to make it tie in better with the South Fork area and with our commercial design guidelines. So we don't, we don't have a picture of what they originally submitted, but it was very much more rectangular, sort of traditional corporate design. This has some unique elements, some different stone, stucco, some scoring in the stucco, some breaks in the roof lines, breaks in the wall plane that all help articulate the building and, and just give it less of a standard rectangular corporate look and try and help it fit in Durango a little bit, little bit better. So these are some of the, going around the building. See the stone base and then some stone elements going up. There are a couple areas where they do exceed the standard height limit in the zone, but those are supported by staff because they screen rooftop equipment and also are allowed for like elevator shafts and other mechanical equipment. So overall, the project does comply with our commercial design guidelines and with the land use and development code standards for preliminary development plans. They will be doing a number of public improvements as far as access, water, and sewer. It is served by South Durango Sanitation District and they've been working with them as well as the fire district to make sure that the property is, can be adequately accessed for emergencies. This did go to the Community Development Commission, June twenty-fourth, and it was approved or there was a recommendation to approve it advanced to you tonight. If it's approved tonight, there's one final administrative step, a final plan development review, and then they'll be able to move into building permit submittal. No public comments have been received regarding this request. So staff finds that the preliminary plan aligns with the requirements of the strategic plan, the, the character district, the commercial design guidelines, and the land use and development code with some recommended conditions. And we have a recommended motion here for your consideration.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. Do I have a motion?
A move to, a move to approve the, move to approve the proposed Hilton Home to Suites preliminary plan development with the findings and conditions as described in the staff report at the Community Development Commission hearing this project and discussed at this meeting and direct the applicant to submit the final plan for staff review.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Great. Council discussion?
I actually had a couple of questions, Scott, if you don't mind, please. The first one, the, the parking, is it just for EV, like just for electric vehicles? Or are there going to be charging stations as part of their?
Code requires a certain number of EV charging stations and EV-ready spaces where conduit is run, where they can install charging stations in the future when they're, when we assume there's going to be more demand.
Okay.
But there are a couple of stations right off the bat.
Sweet. Okay, great. Thank you. And then the CDC voted four to two. Could I hear the rationale on the two descending votes, please?
Yeah.
I, I was gonna listen to the meeting, but I just didn't have the time.
Yeah, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion about why the, the two chose to oppose it. The, you know, we just formed the Community Development Commission and part of that was we wanted to discuss broader policies and approaches to development. And so some of the commissioners have that sort of a lens on things. And so they were looking at more the economic impacts of a chain hotel, the adequacy of hotel rooms in Durango, the impacts on housing and some of those other things, which are important conversations to have. And, and I think they saw this as maybe not aligning with some of those other goals. But this is a quasi-judicial development review hearing. And so we have to use the zoning and the standards that are in place right now to evaluate its merits. And so I think they had some bigger picture concerns about it, that they didn't want to support this particular development. So does that, that make sense? I think there was one other commissioner that had some concerns about the height and the visual impact. He expressed some of those concerns. So I, I think that's a fair summary of their, why they chose to vote against it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, can I get a vote?
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Yaasi?
Yes.
Okay, moving along. Item twelve, first consideration of ordinances, no items. Item thirteen- Okay, moving along. Item 12, first consideration of ordinances, no items. Item 13, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have tape?
And Mayor, the only person that signed up is Sweetie Marbury.
Hi, Sweetie.
Good evening. I have two issues to present to city council. First, I'm encouraging adding sufficient money into the forestry budget this year using the discretionary money from the lodger's tax because the old trees in neighborhoods and parks are breaking and falling. Safety must be a priority for the city council when it comes to the street trees and parks in Durango. I sent the city council pictures of the 20-foot limb that fell Friday morning from the street tree in my front yard and the tree in the alley that also broke from the heavy winds and rain. Unless it happens to you, a counselor isn't really touched by the forestry department. Thank goodness, the, the city arborist was able to remove the damaged trees, but three employees cannot really take care of 12,000 city trees. They are old and they are breaking on the older sides of town. Add more money to hire contractors. We have many tree services in Durango to remove the damaged trees before they fall on roofs and yards in Durango homes. Second, I support the 205 reauthorization of the sales tax. The ballot language must spell out to voters exactly what they are voting on. Parks, trails, open space, maintenance, operations, fire mitigation with an advisory board to oversee capital projects is a must. I would even add the words urban forest to the ballot. The reauthorization will be paid by visitors to Durango coming to those hotels that will be built. And no higher tax is a plus for residents. Keeping the sales tax stable makes sense. The city hall and the much-needed police department is a plus for all of us in our community. Selling the current city hall and the leaky shoebox police department makes sense. The city will gain 60 to 80 parking spaces by relocating the police department. This makes sense to voters and is a plus to all the residents in need of parking. I look forward to seeing the ballot language when it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is that right?
No one else. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Item number 14, other new business. I'm going to bring up one thing that we just talked about at the study session in regards to what Allison discussed at Public Works. I was hoping maybe in a quick in-between the two meetings, I did a quick research, and I feel like there might be other municipalities in Colorado that do the residential fee every three years. And so I just want us to know, like, is it every year? Because I know it's a council ordinance or a city ordinance, state or, well, there's a state law, but then it's a city ordinance that we, that we passed, we didn't do it, but it, council did, to do the one year. On, and so I just was hoping maybe staff could research like best practices in Colorado, how to meet state reg, you know, regulations and, and how we should present that to our commu, or community and if we need to change ordinances and stuff.
If I could just to see, maybe I can clear. I think that what we can do from staff is just provide you the information of what our ordinance, it is by ordinance that says it's annually and it is by the, it is at the expense of the resident. And I can maybe do a comparison cities of what others in Colorado do, how often they are looking to have to do this inspection, what that inspection costs and who bears that expense. Email that out to the council. And then if, from that information, if a counselor wants to discuss maybe changing the ordinance or moving, then that can be brought up in new business, if that's what you're thinking.
Yes, that sounds great. To me, if there's council support.
Well, I, I was gonna, I mentioned during the study session, I was gonna bring this topic up. So maybe I can make my comment and then.
Well, I just made one and so.
So sticking with the rules, at this point, you need to get a motion on the floor.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to have staff do some backend research, send an email to council with some background information and potential steps we could do moving forward. I'll second. Yes, for the backflow cross connected devices. Counsel discussion?
Yeah, I'll just discuss it then. I, so when this was presented to council during the study session, I, I wanted to see, I wanted to get better information on how many households are impacted. So if we need to test the backflow preventers, first, if the state requires it every three years and we're not in compliance, because that's what triggers this, I think. But we on top of it have a city ordinance that says we do it every year. That's the first thing. And we haven't checked on it, it seems. I think a lot of people in our community are not aware of it. We have about 9,000 households. If the majority, I am guessing, if the majority of these households, which I think is likely, but this would be information I would seek from the city staff, has a backflow preventer that needs to be tested and they're not tested, on top of which they have to pay for the testing at a cost of, I think they mentioned $150. I think that is quite a burden, especially for lower-income families. And if you take into account that in our water funds, combined with the Water Capital Fund, or the Capital Projects Fund, the Water Enterprise Fund, according to the audited financial report, we have about $17 million. So I think, first of all, how many households are going to be impacted? And is it maybe a nice use of that excess accumulated fund balance to relieve some of the cost burden to our residents, whether they're the homeowner or ultimately the tenant? Doesn't really matter because the tenant ends up paying it anyway. So my request would have been for a motion.
This is my request and we have the first.
But I'm discussing.
Well, you can at the end.
Didn't see the timer start.
Yeah, it did. It started. Go ahead.
So my, my request would be to have that additional information on how many households can we support the households with a city service to inspect backflow preventers, to relieve lower-income families primarily, but in the end, everybody in our city. So that would, that is my part of the discussion. So that would be an emotion I would have made, but I guess you beat me to it.
I guess the only thing I would add to the conversation, you know, after 75 days of non-compliance, they're shutting off water. I think that's a fairly heavy-handed approach and maybe there's a way to maybe work in, work more with the, with the homeowner or the business or whatever, to, to me like, I mean, we need water, you know, water's a necessity. And so I think 75 days while I know we're doing a fair amount of due diligence, I still think it's really heavy-handed to, to say we're going to shut off your water if you don't comply with this. I think there's a lot of barriers involved, 150 bucks being the primary, and then potential language barrier thrown in there in addition to. So I'd like to, you know, just kind of look at this overall and see what sort of scope we can put on this.
Yeah, I think information. And then if we want to move forward with more information, and I mean, this doesn't go out until September 20th, it looks like. So it looks like there's, we have a little time, I think. Yes. Okay. Okay. Any other comments? All right. Can we get a vote?
Counselor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamyazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Bossmans?
Can I hit a motion one more time?
The motion was for the city manager and staff to present background on the ordinance that we currently have, and then potential municipalities and what they do and.
I wrote down best practices.
Best practices. Thank you.
Best practices after reviewing our.
Yeah, after reviewing our ordinances. So we could decide if we want to make any changes to our ordinance and then, or bring this up again.
Yes.
All right. Any new, other new business? Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to see if there's any support for. I had read in the Herald that we need to have a motion by city council to go ahead and install a traffic camera on Amnis City Drive because we've had one tragic death on that street. There's a whole lot of obstructions down that narrow street and Amnis View. Okay, sorry. Because I did go to that community meeting way back in, I don't know if it was the winter or spring, and one of the solutions was possibly to put a traffic camera there. And at that time, the police department did have money for traffic cameras. So I think my motion is, so let's look at placement of a traffic camera down that drive.
Do you want to? I mean, I know there's, there's an ongoing process that I've been working with the police department on and the contract for a sample system.
Bryce, do you have anything to talk about, just more information on a traffic camera?
I've worked on this currently. However, anything we do is going to be community-led. And so we have met with different groups of people within the city. However, we don't feel like we've met with everyone. And so we're trying to get, we were met with Clancy and Engage Durango, and we're making sure that we are able to allow the community, we're going to do a video this week to explain everything. There's the nuances. I mean, you really need to think about who, like if somebody's driving the vehicle that the vehicle doesn't belong, belong to, who does the ticket go to? Is it a civil penalty? Is it a criminal penalty? I mean, there's so many nuances. I think that we need to get that information out to the public. Once we get that information to the public, they can make an educated decision. And that's why we're working with Engage Durango to reach more of the public. I think we have had these community meetings and the ones I've attended, they had some great examples of things we could do on that street specifically, like pinch points and all these, they, they offered a bunch of different, making it a one-way and a camera. And the community get, did come up and pick the camera was probably the most liked option in that, in that meeting. However, we want to get that information out to the entire community. We are looking at budgetary, outcome-based budgetary items. We're looking at city ordinances, and we're doing all the legwork on the backend. However, we're also communicating with the.
Can I make a point of order? I, I hate to interrupt you, but.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. We're discussing an update, a full update. Maybe the order, the motion you made should be to request an update, what you're giving now, in a future agenda item so that people in our community that live in that area are aware that it's discussed and they can follow this, this meeting. I think that's the proper procedure, if I'm understanding correctly.
So she had a motion. We're getting a little bit of information for her motion. And then if we all want an update, her motion can fail, and then we can ask for that motion as well. I know that there's ongoing Animus View drives, engaged meetings and stuff happening. And so we're just going with what she said.
And what we're doing is trying to listen to the community right now and do the groundwork to have good information for the council. And then, once we have that information, we know what the community wants and that these items are community-led, and we've truly listened to the community, then I think we come, we're going to come forth with council direction.
Okay, thank you for that. I withdraw my motion. I'm glad that something's moving forward with this project.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Bryce. Any other new business? All right. Next item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.